I declare this special meeting of Lee County Board of Commissioners in session. We'll start out with a prayer and then we'll have the pledge of allegiance. You'll stand with me, please.
Lord, our God and Father, we praise your name for your goodness to us. You have blessed us in so many ways and, Lord, we thank you. We thank you for the rain. We ask you, Lord, to forgive us of our shortcomings and sinful ways. Lord, be in our hearts and on our minds in all that we do. Lord, we pray for the hurting in those in need and, Lord, we pray that their prayers will be answered. Lord, we pray for our great nation and its leaders. We pray for your blessings. We pray for our troops and, Lord, we thank them for their service to our country. May we never forget. Lord, we thank you for answering prayers. We thank you for your love for us. We pray in the name of our Lord and Savior. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We're here today to consider an interlocal agreement with the Lee County Board of Education. Mr. Crump.
Thank you, Commissioner Autumn. We needed to go ahead and hold this meeting today due to the time constraint that the Board of Education is under in rehiring the teacher assistants. They need to have these teacher assistants back on payroll, as I understand it, before the end of the month so that they can start and be part of a school that starts in 30 days. It's less than 30 days and they'd actually start, I guess, a week before that point. So we're operating under a time constraint to meet that obligation with them. I've put before you, and Commissioner Shook and Womack have not seen this letter, but we've received a letter from Chairman Williams this morning. It's a one-page letter. Basically says that as Chairman of Lee County Board of Education, we agree to the condition as set forth in the budget ordinance for fiscal year 2011, 2012. And it reads that section minus stating that there'll be an interlocal agreement. So in talking with Mr. Williams this morning, this was their attempt to, you know, say that they agreed to this situation but without an interlocal agreement. So, you know, I did get that from him this morning and it's before you. And it agrees to how the money would be spent and it agrees that it is for the two years. We've had several different versions of an agreement floating back and forth between us and the superintendent and now their county attorney. We received their agreement, their latest proposal from Mr. Love. I believe we received this on Friday. And Mr. Talbert has provided you all with a copy of an agreement that's lined out and highlighted and that kind of thing. So, you know, I think the decision first that the board needs to make is whether they want the interlocal agreement in place and then which interlocal agreement we want to have in place and what it's going to say.
Okay. I think from there, we probably need to entertain a motion for what the board desires. And as you speak, I want to remind everyone if we're going to speak into the mic because of this telephone exchange with Commissioner Shook and Chairman Shook and Commissioner Womack.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we accept the county language in our interagreement and that we have an interagreement. I'd like to make one addition to that is that we add under page one, about the one, two, under witness, under one, two, three, four, five, six paragraphs down, that we add the language after requirement of law and/or as an increase in the base of local operation funding for Lee County schools. And also that if the school board chooses not to accept the agreement, that we go back to the original proposal of the county manager and the fact that we fund at last year's level plus $160,000, which would take care of the, I think it was John 1.6 COLA.
Yes, sir. Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Any discussion?
I'd like to discuss my position on this. Oh, this is something I had. This is, add to this right here. We had a lot of, sorry, Jim.
Yeah, it would be page three in your agenda packet. It's the last whereas before now therefore. Mr. Parks wants to put in a clause, I think it says or as an increase in the base for Lee County schools.
I'll explain why on that. As you know, I voted against the increase in school funding. But after consideration and seeing the will of the board that we go ahead with the additional funding, I do think that we need some clauses such that we let the school understand, number one, that it's not a perpetual ongoing thing, that we'll take a look at the school budget year by year and make a decision based on their needs and our county needs and our county requirements. I think the other thing that has been brought to my attention is that if we allow it to be a perpetual thing, if we make any cuts, as John mentioned to us earlier, and I hope all of us got that word, is that if we make this a permanent thing, we have no control over it after that. If we decide to reduce it, we have to reduce the county. And the county heads that came before us worked very hard at cutting their budget to the point that we even actually provided some of the information back. I was really proud of the work that they had done in providing us with information about what their department does as well as line item by line item and justification for everything that they were asking for. To come back and say, well, we're going to reduce the school budget so they automatically have to cut again, I don't think that that's fair, but that's what the law says. So we don't need to put ourselves into that position. And I think it would be irresponsible for us to put ourselves into that position, to have to make that decision to cut the county some more just because we need to cut the school. The other thing that I think it would do for us if we didn't approve this particular interlocal agreement, we have passed a proposal for an audit, a performance audit. If next year that performance audit comes back and says, here's what you need to do, here's what school's doing well, here's what they need to do to improve, here's what your funding level should be, our hands would be tied. We couldn't do anything with it. So then all of a sudden, we've wasted our taxpayer dollars because we've already tied our own heads. We all took an oath to be physically responsible in this county as a Board of Commissioners. And I charge that if we're going to be responsible, then we need to set forth the provisions whereby we're going to additionally fund the school outside of what the Constitution tells us we have to. It's not that we don't like the children. In fact, I propose to you that if school board rejects this, they're the ones that don't like the children nor do they like the teachers. They just want to spend the money. So I think that this is absolutely necessary. I think it's necessary with the language that we've been providing.
Anyone else?
Hey, Doc. Listen, Jim Womack, I just wanted to say that when John Crumpton talks, I can only hear every other word. So he has to get closer to the mic so that we can understand him.
Okay. All right. Anyone else?
Was there a motion?
Yeah. No, we're talking.
That's what I want to hear again.
You need to repeat that.
Okay. The motion is that we approve. I'll tell you what. Can you help?
Let me send out a clean copy without all the strike throughs of the agreement.
To which would be added this phrase or is it already included?
He would add that phrase.
That one question about the original agreement has stated, are attorneys still comfortable with that language from the original agreement with that petition?
Yes, they are. Saying yes.
Okay, good.
Okay. It would be on page one. Essentially, it's to accept the language of this interlocal agreement with the exception of adding in a clause afterward says requirement of law, say add in or as an increase in the base local operations budget for Lee County schools. In other words, what we want to do is avoid this additional money becoming part of their base and then we have to fund it every year. Or we have to reduce the county funding as a result of reducing their funding. We don't know what the state's going to do. We don't know what the federal level's going to do. If we tie our hands to the point that we can't act on it, then we're remiss in what we're doing.
This is what I have just one comment to make. The plans that the Board of Education need to realize that it's to their best interest if our county stays healthy financially. If we do not stay healthy financially, it's not a good deal for them. And all you need to do is consult our neighbors in Hinton County to see what happens to the school system when the county budget is not healthy. So I favor that your motion's taken. Yes, I can.
Yes.
While we're waiting, I'd like to ask Chairman School Board to comment on the amendment.
He might want to comment on his letter, too, if you would give him the opportunity.
And he might want to comment on what I'm having Commissioner Parks writing down as an addition because I needed to see that and you may need to see it if you want to comment on it.
You want to go ahead and comment now, Mr. Chairman?
If that's your desire, then.
Well, let's wait one second, let him get this document in front of him. You can stay at the podium if you want to.
That's okay. I've been used to multitasking, so.
I think Mr. Williams should talk about the letter.
Yeah, you can go ahead and talk about your letter.
Well, you might as well wait because he ought to hear about the letter and Commissioner Parks should hear about it as well.
And folks, I just wanted to say again, the only people I can actually hear the first time and hear clearly are Charlie Parks and Doc Oldham when they talk. I heard Richard breaking up and I heard Commissioner Reeves breaking up as well and John Crumpton still breaking up. So I don't know what the mic situation is there, but we're going to hear clearly. We're going to have to let folks speak more directly into the mic.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's great.
All right.
Did you want to see this?
Yes, I have not seen the document you're talking about at all.
It's right down there. It's the amendment that Commissioner Parks is proposing right down a little in pencil there.
And what are we waiting on here?
We're waiting for Sean to look over the agreement.
The amendment that Commissioner Parks made.
Okay.
Okay. I think Commissioner Reeves had the floor.
I merely asked Chairman Williams if he would first like to comment on the amendment and in addition, maybe give us some insight on your letter.
Thank you, Commissioner Reeves. Thank you, vice chair Autumn. To the commissioners, can you hear me, Linda and Mr. Womack?
Yes, I can. Yes.
Several concerns. I think our attorney has looked at your original agreement and met with Mr. Hall, I think, two or three times since your original agreement. And I think between the two of them, they have crafted an interagency agreement that I believe that both could live with if that's the route we want to go. The concerns that I have and that our board has is we'd be setting a precedence in the state of North Carolina by doing this interagency agreement. Even in my conversation with Mr. Crumpton this morning, there is no school board or county commissioner in the state that has anything of this sort in place. And we're concerned that this interagency agreement may not just be a two-year, that what would prevent a further interagency agreement where you want to allocate money so forth as we go along to specific projects. So that's some of the concerns that we had as a board. And what we originally believed we were working was on an agreement to the school board to find 400,000 and the county would match 400,000 and 100,000 going to tutors and graduation ambassadors. That has been what we all thought we understood in the very beginning the money was for. The letter that I wrote basically took it from a legal, out of lawyer's hands and made it into just regular, regular people, as we are, where basically we just said, we do acknowledge and agree that Lee County Schools, the current expense special appropriation for Lee County Schools in amount of 500,000 is a commitment for two years. It is our commitment that the Lee County Board of Education will match the 400,000 appropriated by the county to pay for the teacher assistance and the 400,000 allocated from the county will be used strictly for teacher assistance in the fiscal years ending June 2012 and June 2013. The remaining 100,000 in the appropriation does not have to be matched by the Board of Education. However, the funds are to be used to pay tutors and for graduation ambassadors program. If the General Assembly and if during the fiscal year of 2012, 2013, the General Assembly restores the funding to a level that eliminates discretionary cuts or adjusts it without reducing the other state categories, the board will reimburse the county an amount equal to the state increase up to 500,000 that has been provided for teacher assistance, tutors and graduation ambassadors. That has been what we thought we were doing from the very beginning. That is what you have in your agreement or your budget ordinance. And that's what we're saying we will agree to. And I think that's what the basis for everything was when we first started this walk down this road. It wasn't a whole bunch of legal things and a whole bunch of getting lawyers involved. It was just basically at that point a gentleman's agreement that you'll do this, we do that. And that's where we're at. And we're just asking not to set a precedence in the state and also just to be able to work with us. We understand it's a two-year obligation. We're not looking for anything more than two years. We're not trying to fight the county. We're trying to work with you and not be the pace setters of something that could be used for against us farther down the road.
I think the issue here is the dictation of current expense funding or how they would use current expense to pay for an item. And that's where they have an issue with maybe that setting a bad precedent. From my perspective, you know, it's clearly up to the board how they feel comfortable in doing this agreement with the Board of Education. The one thing that, you know, I'm concerned with and the finance officer is concerned with is that we're using fund balance for this appropriation for two years and we do not want to be obligated beyond those two years without being able to check our fiscal situation and, you know, and also their fiscal situation. As Commissioner Shook said, it's critical that, you know, we're in good fiscal situation. We need to, they need us to be in good fiscal situation. They have capital projects they're going to need us to borrow money for in the future. And we certainly don't want fund balance to be an issue when we go to borrow money in the future. So once again, it comes back to, you know, how comfortable the commissioners are and, you know, with us, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
I have a comment or two, but I wanted to defer to Mr. Reeves if by any chance you want to say anything at this point.
I better wait and see what you say first.
Okay. Well, I think the most, well, I believe that this, as I said at the last meeting, I think this is precedent setting and I think it's unnecessary. I think it's overdone. It's overwrought. And I think that, but I understand it. It's not my style. It's not what I would have sought. But it is what it is and there has been a shift in this board. Not something that pleases me, but it is what it is. And so having said that, I've looked at this agreement and I think I can see how there are two sides here, two boards that have their own sense of dignity and place and history. And I personally seek greatly to have this be a partnership where we are really have goodwill between us and have not so much the posture of this board or that board, but have the schools and the children and the teachers as clearly our high objective. And I don't think we're going to fail that under these circumstances. But this agreement is not something that goes down easily to many on the school board. I understand that and I was on the school board and I really do appreciate it. Again, having said that, I've looked at this agreement and I don't find anything that violates what you need and violates what the majority on this board has said they demand and require in order for this special supplement to go through. So even this amendment that Mr. Parks has put down sort of begs the obvious. In other words, I have taken it from the first moment to believe and trust that it is no more or no less than what we've described and what you've suggested here, that we're going to make this special appropriation. I understand how this can, how it can be, there is a suspicion unfortunately that it can be manipulated or changed, but we do have the opportunity of seeing how that takes place over the coming year. And I'm sure you want this money to do what you have to do and to continue it into the second year. And so I'm sure that there's no question in my mind that the school system is honorable and that it understands what this is about. You and your attorney have tried to simplify it. To my mind, simple is better. It makes it more of a gentleman's agreement, but I don't think that's the will of this board. And if I felt like you were being, sort of your nose was being rubbed in this beyond what I've already said, I would be very much opposed to it. But my hope is that you can appreciate and accept what I believe the majority of this board wishes and that we are not going to do anything undue that would deny you the funds that you need to get going with this year and next. So in a way, we have these two, these two bodies that are posturing and need to show political pledges and strengths and power, for better or worse. As far as the audit goes, I think that's a hypothetical. I don't agree with everything Mr. Parks has said by a good measure about the audit. We have not even concluded what that will look like. And so I don't know that that's going, that's relevant to this discussion today at all. I think what is relevant is that this document would certainly leave no opportunity for error. It is very precise and over detailed, but it is that.
Commissioner Hayes?
Yes, sir.
Let me interrupt you just a minute. I just want to say this. This board voted to appropriate this money to the school board. And I think at the same time, when we voted to appropriate this money to the school board, we also said we'd do it through an interlocal agreement. We voted on that also. So what we have in front of us now is an agreement. I think the question before this board is, is this agreement suitable to both parties? And I think that's where we need to be headed.
Well, if I might just say one other thing. And what I'm saying is I would hope that the school board would understand just that and that without this interlocal agreement, we may, we may have to revert back to something else. We don't have the votes to do otherwise. And so I think that we need to agree to this. If you have to hold your nose to it, that's okay, too. But we need to move forward. You need to have the funds to hire the teacher assistants. And I have no problem, this does not violate the integrity of the school board, but it does set a precedent. So that's, I just want the public to know that there are clearly two sides in this discussion, but I think we have to be reasonable people and look at the big picture and not be too concerned about our sort of individual and political expectations.
You know, as I listen, I'm somewhat confused in that everything seems to center around one board trusting the other. This is a business arrangement. This is no different in my mind than when I go to a bank to borrow money and they put certain contingencies on it for me to get it, I can accept it or not. But I don't find anything wrong with our setting the record straight in writing. I don't find anything wrong with simply saying, in case a new board takes a seat and wishes to challenge what's been done in the past, there'll be no mix-up, no misunderstandings. There's always going to be different interpretations, but the record will show what this group's intent was. And so for me, if it's causing a problem with the school board, and I hope that's not what you're saying, my misunderstanding. And if it is, I apologize, but I will tell you that that concerns me. This is not a personal friendship deal. I didn't give up my Monday morning to come in and say, let me see if I can help my buddy out. I came in here because I have a duty to try and do the best I can in terms of being a fiscally responsible person for the county taxpayers. And I think this, this document, I think a couple of you said it's setting a precedent. Okay. We're just ahead of the game. But one thing is for sure, if we all can agree that this doesn't do anything other than say, here's a record of what the intent was, I don't know what kind of problem we ought to be having right now.
I ask.
Sure, sure.
Is there wording, and again, I'm not an attorney, but is there wording in that that if the legislators fund teacher assistance, that we have to revert the money back to you?
Is there words?
Is there wording in that document that is of the concern that states that the legislators fund teacher assistance, that we have to revert this 400,000 back to you? And if so, our concern is they did fully fund teacher assistance, but then took it through discretionary funding that has caused us the dilemma that we're in. And so that's our concern of the wording is if it says that, then technically you would give us 400,000 and then turn around and say, the legislators fund- and say, "The legislator's funded teacher assistance, give it back." And I just want to make sure that that's not there, and if it's not, then I don't have an issue.
Section five.
Yeah.
Section five.
The agreement we just handed out.
Now, I have a better understanding of what you're seeking.
Yes, sir.
I believe, though, wasn't this part of your agreement with superintendent school, Mr. Crumpton?
It was that if they...it was understood by me that the cuts here were being made because of the discretionary cut, not because of any reduction in funding for teacher assistance. I think the actual wording for the discretionary cut is called the LEA adjustment. I think that is what that is, and section five covers that. If at any time during the term of this agreement, the state of North Carolina reduces or eliminates the discretionary reduction, also referred to as the LEA adjustment, and does not decrease other state funding categories as identified in the Appropriations Act, or the school board receives any additional funding that may be used to fund current operation expenses, then the school board will pay back to the county an amount equal to the reduction in the LEA adjustment. It does not, you know, it took out the language about teacher assistance being fully funded and put in the LEA adjustment or discretionary reduction wording.
So, that's different than the one that came over?
That was different than the first one.
Okay.
And actually, we use this wording as part, because this is what the superintendent provided, and it's, you know, obviously technical to their type of funding, which I was not aware of.
That's...yes, sir. It eliminates one board member's concern.
We got to start somewhere.
It eliminates one, and understand what all of us are trying to do. I think it's trying to find that middle of the road here.
And protect jobs. We're trying to make sure...
And that's what we're trying to do.
Right. Make sure they have a job.
We protect the job, but we give the education to the children that they need. And we also want to make sure that our county stays solid and that we have the flexibility in out years. I guess, I'm not sure where Commissioner Hayes is coming from on the performance audit. I thought of us, all of us understood that the performance audit is one that sees what we're doing well and sees what we can improve on, and that's, and we should have the flexibility to be able to go with that one. So, that's all we're looking for.
I had this question. Can you give me an example, Mr. Crumpton, your understanding that how this gets triggered, if it were to get triggered? This part five, and let's say there's a violation.
I don't...
If the state returns funds for additional teacher assistance, then we would take back an equal amount, as I understand it. If they...we're right, when we started this and determined that we would add this money, this special appropriation, it was like things are set, and there's going to be a gap, and we are going to do our best to fill that gap with teacher assistance, with tutors and the ambassador program. If the state in its infinite wisdom comes back and says that we're going to modify that, and we're going to give the school district back some more money for teacher assistance, then that's, in my simple way of thinking, that's where we would reach in and take back an equal amount. Is that at all plausible?
As it was explained to me by the superintendent, he didn't think that would happen, because in the legislature's eye, they believe that teacher assistance, teachers are fully funded. So, the only, you know, really, if they were to give money back to the schools, it would have to go through the discretionary cut area.
Okay.
Because that's where, and that's one of the things that I think the legislature is looking at, is, you know, where school districts had to take that discretionary cut.
So, it would not affect the...
I don't think it would. I think it's pretty much narrowed down to that discretionary area, as it was explained to me by the superintendent, and when he explained it to me, made perfect sense. I mean, because really, that's where, you know, the major cut to the school is, $2.8 million, and so, they got to spread that, you know, that's their decision. How they take that $2.8 million cut is their decision, and they took it and they spread it out all over the system.
Call the question.
Are we ready to vote? Okay. Now, make sure we're all voting for the same interlocal agreement. I know one that Commissioner Parks just had the amendment added, so I'll ask you all, all in favor of this interlocal agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Unanimous, do we have any ayes? Okay, it looks like the ayes carry.
So, that's the voting count?
It looks like some unanimous, championship.
Move to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.